Meeting to order. Notice that it has been properly posted. Our media representative notified in accordance of Wisconsin statute section 19.84, 1B. We're going to call it to order for the public hearing for the next 15 minutes. The in-person person, oh, return to in-person instruction and community service plans.
All right, well, now we have an audience, so we're going to do the safe return for it to in-person instruction and continuity of service plan. I'm going to go through these plans. These are part of our requirement for SR3. There's actually these two plans that are a part, and then eventually, when the board puts together the budget of how we're going to use those SR3 funds, we'll have another public hearing to discuss that or to get feedback on it from our community as well. So I'll call your attention to the screen. This is a template from CISA 5, so you can see it will look very template-like. The first part, returning to in-person learning, really just has the district outline what we're doing for mitigation for COVID-19 to ensure safety for kids in the building. So, description of maintaining the safety of staff and students will publish the COVID-19 screening checklist, encourage students and staff members to utilize the checklist before entering the school facility, encourage people to stay home if they're feeling well or if they have COVID-19 symptoms, limit visitors for activities and nonessential purposes, and provide sanitizing stations throughout the buildings. Description to continue to provide services regardless of the mode for instruction, so in case we have to shift from in-person to virtual or hybrid, we'll offer, we'll start by offering in-person learning five days a week according to our academic year calendar. The district is working with families in special situations to provide instructional programming in a virtual environment. So, we have some kids that are a part of the virtual empowered program at the middle school, but we also have some of our little set the elementary for various reasons that are learning virtually under the direction of a couple of certified staff with a strong role by parents. So it's not virtual like it was last year, but we want to make sure we can accommodate the learning needs of all of our kids. In the event of a school closure due to the pandemic, the district students will utilize their current one-to-one technology for all students to continue virtual learning. So that will be very similar to what we did way back in March of 2020. Regardless of the mode of instruction, we'll continue to provide meals up to the community provision as long as USDA continues that allowance. Meals will be provided for all eligible youth during the school year, and if the school is closed due to a pandemic, the district will assess its ability to distribute meals using, utilizing the same process it did during the spring of 2020. So, we'll figure out how to get food to kids, if it's the drop-off by the door, if it's the box pickup, if it's the bulk pickup. We even did some deliveries during that time. You know, we're small enough to really be able to accommodate the needs of our families, especially when it's around the idea of food insecurity. And then we employ one full-time school nurse who will continue to offer health services in-person or virtually, just like she did when we have, were closed a long time ago. School district also partners with professional services group to provide mental health support for students and families, and that involves the families signing up for those services. Mitigation measures, so universal correct wearing of masks. We adopted COVID guidelines in 2021. These guidelines specify that masks be recommended for both students and staff, and we continued with that. Modifying facilities to allow for physical distancing, so we're using proper signage, insulation of floor details in some locations, water bottle filling stations. We do have the regular water fountains open as well. Physical distancing is encouraged. Individual schools will determine the cafeteria service that best suits the needs of their students, so... I'm just going to escape out of here and... So, at the... Both schools are using their cafeteria. At the elementary school, the kids are sitting on little dots to have some separation. Middle school, we're just minimizing the amount of kids at the tables and then utilizing both the stage and the cafeteria area for lunch service. Okay. Students will be assigned to cohorts in the elementary school, and then transportation will comply with CDC guidelines regarding capacity and masking that are in effect during the 21 and 22 school year. So the bus masking is under federal guideline. I don't see that turning over. I think the next deadline for them to review is January or February. Hand washing and respiratory etiquette. Hand washing is actually something we do talk to kids about with etiquette every year. Heather's going to make the rounds again in November and December to do some reminders about good hand washing. In addition, hand sanitizing stations and liquids are available in all classrooms, just like they were last year. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improving ventilation. We're lucky, we're fortunate to have high-quality ventilation already and up-to-date HVAC systems in both buildings. Enhanced sanitation procedures have been implemented and continue at both schools, focusing on high-touch surfaces. We use cleaning solutions that are rated to kill the SARS virus. In addition to daily cleaning, we disinfect all surfaces with the electrostatic sprayer. And that was new last year. Contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine in collaboration with the state, local territorial health departments. So we are continuing to contact trace, and we have transparent reporting to all of our stakeholders, utilizing our dashboard, which is posted on our website. We do do some screening for, with people that are coming into our facility, and we try to eliminate even some of those vendors coming in when schools are here. And otherwise, they need to be masked when they're in with us. The school will continue to provide current health information to staff, students, families about the signs and symptoms of COVID-19, when they should stay home and when they can return to school. And even though the guidance on that really hasn't changed recently, we do continue to push it out on occasion. Diagnostic and screening testing. We recommend students and staff get tested for COVID by their medical provider or local pharmacy, under the direction of their medical provider. Should the district seek the need for onsite testing, students could have the option to be tested with parent permission when they are identified as close contacts or become symptomatic. This is not anything we're looking at at this point. Honestly, Nurse Heather has enough things to do, let alone opening up a testing options. We did remember survey our families at the beginning of the year to see if a testing station was something that they would provide, that would, they would find helpful, and didn't have a lot of interest in that or vaccine clinic. Efforts to provide vaccinations to educators. So we did, last year, they had the, staff had the opportunity to be vaccinated. New staff will be given access to vaccination, by working with local healthcare partners and kind of public health. And we're not going to be a vaccine site for students at this point. Okay? And then coordination with state and local health officials. We stay in contact with both our state and local health officials. Honestly, we meet with the county at least once a month, a group of superintendents. Heather meets with them even more frequently, and then we're both in communication with the public health, the state of, Department of Public Health through just some online meetings. So that's return to in-person instruction. And then continuity of service is really a lot of the same in watching our six o'clock time, and I'm going to kind of finish up here just so if we have any questions. So the continuity of service really just ensures that regardless of what happens with the virus, we have a plan to continue to provide services for academic supports for our students, which we do, as well as social, emotional, mental health services if we need to, that we take care of our food service and make sure that food support is available to our kids and our families. And then we will be reviewing this plan periodically and revise the plan for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services at least every six months. So you're going to see this plan on our agenda six months from now. That doesn't mean necessarily that there's going to be any changes. It just means that it's our time for our six-month review. And if we do have any changes in our practices with any of our COVID mitigation or anything related to instruction during a pandemic, now all those changes will be done in these plans, so you'll see them on the agenda for review. So any comments from the public? I was telling Katie I was so excited to see responses to the survey already. I didn't even realize it. I said, I didn't think I had put the link out, but it was on the board stuff, so...
We always look at that.
Yeah, nice. So Helen will be pushing out the, these plans on Facebook. This plan does have, the continuity of service does have a survey for public input, so public can comment, and then the board will review those comments at the December work session.
Thank you.
Did any, did any of the community members want to speak during public comments today? No?
I don't think we're ready to go.
All right. Well, then we'll move on to the agenda, to the revisions and approval of the agenda.
No revisions.
Can I get a motion? For, to approve the agenda?
Oh.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, Rachel, let me just go over.
Yeah, we have no community signed up to participate, and our staff participation will be added to the agenda.
Right. Then for number two, moving the, I need the approval of the minutes of the regular session on 10/18/21 and work session on 11/10/21.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. And then on to the...
Hello?
Ooh, that scared me. I heard it ding, I thought you were shutting off your other thing.
Hello?
All right. Moving on to the monthly financial reports.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but it's not your turn yet.
I can't hear you.
That's because I'm muted. I'm sorry, Heather.
No worries, no worries.
You can mute, and I'll signal to you when it's your turn.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. All right, okay. Moving on to the... That's okay, she scared me, threw me out my name. I was doing really good up to this point.
Yes, you were, yeah. We can go right into that, just one approval for the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. All right. Wait, did we, we did that right? Nope. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda then? Make a motion for the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And on to new business for personnel.
Three items in personnel today. The first is just a position switch, so I'm looking for the approval for the resignation of Jen Schuler, one of our lunch duty aides.
Can I get a motion for Jen Schuler's resignation?
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the second one is for the approval of the rehiring, actually, Natasha Pointe for the BEF lunch aide. Natasha was with us up through last year, and then chose not to come back to do, she's doing some other things, and now is available, so we're excited to see her back.
Can I get the approval of the rehiring of Natasha Poushier?
Pointe.
Pointe.
So.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then the last one is the approval of the hiring of Lisa Boden as our new administrative assistant. Her position will support people's services, she'll support some, support some of the district things. She also provides a backup for the district office middle school desk.
Can I get the approval for the hiring of Lisa Boden?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on then to the referendum survey.
So last, last spring, as we all remember, our referendum for the district did not pass in April. You know, now that the state budget is finalized and our state, our local budget is finalized, it's evident to Nicole and I, and I know the board has taken a look at the budget, and we recognize that our need for referendum, especially with our declining enrollment, continues. I think it would be, it would be interesting to survey our community this year and just sometime between now and really our December work session, to get some opinions from the community about where they're at in their feelings of referendum. We certainly got some feedback from them last spring, but I think it would be interesting to see where folks are at now. So I'm looking for a motion to approve moving forward with a referendum survey.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then on to the first reading of the Neola policy updates following third.
So no action item on this. We just finished with Neola policies, one of their two updates throughout the year. Not anything super earth-shattering in this bunch. I think one of the things that's interesting, there was a change in the virtual instruction policy where now you can utilize clips, teachers can use video clips of themselves as part of their evaluation. It's just one of those things that is possible now from COVID, so other than that, a lot of just definitions and a lot of eventful things. Would you agree, Kirke?
Yep.
Yeah. But we did like our Neola rep, and so that was good.
It was very easy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did a very nice job.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, to communication reports from the principal. So Luke's not here today, so do him a good, do him a good.
Yes. So, um...
Do you want me to project your screen?
Oh, yeah, I thought that was the plan.
Oh, sure. Or we could watch Ted Lasso, it looks like you've that queued up too. I believe I've also hung up on Heather as well, so we'll just get her over.
Okay. So, um, come on, go to the next slide. So we were asked to report on our universal screening data and kind of where we are at in both buildings, so I'm going to speak for both myself and for Luke, because he's not able to be here tonight. In case you don't already know, the universal screener that we utilize in middle school is MAP, Measures of Academic Progress. That's given to students four through eight. It measures math, it tests language arts like reading, and then also language arts, language usage, so mostly like writing and grammar. And we do give that triannually in the fall, the winter, and the spring. In the elementary school, they give the STAR, the standardized test for the assessment of reading, that is given to all of their BES students triannually as well, with the exception of their third grade, who does not take it in the spring because they do take the whole exam and use that as their third data point. Tests STAR math and then language arts, so early literacy and reading. So, what we did is we, we are, we are showing you a comparison of our students from last fall and the percent of them that were proficient in certain areas as compared to last fall when they came in, and then this fall. So I want to be clear and making sure everybody understands, we're not looking at like the same group of kids. So it's not like last year's fourth graders who are now fifth graders, it's the batch of fourth graders last fall and where they tested and the number who tested proficient, and then this year's fourth graders, if that makes sense. So what you're looking at right now is the comparison of fall 2020 to fall 2021 at BMS for math, and this is the percent proficient. What that means in MAP testing is that these are kids who scored anywhere from the 41st percentile or higher as compared with their peers nationwide in the area of math. And you'll see that we have both red and green here. Red indicates a downward trend from last fall to this fall, and then green would indicate an upward trend. So this is the same story, but using STAR data for BES, so you can kind of see, again, we've got a couple of reds and a green. This is reading at BMS. Reading at BES. So, you probably saw a lot of red there. So the big takeaways that we have here is, you know, feel like we all came in with rose-colored glasses, excited about this year, we're going to have a return to normalcy and like, you know, everything's going to be all great, but our reality is that our kids are coming in with far more deficits this year than what they did last year. And this is pretty much in all areas across the board, K8, with the exception of a couple of grade levels and a couple of areas that need just very miniscule gains. So what does that mean for us? That means we have a lot of work to do, and we need to be painstakingly intentional about how we are spending our time with students. So here are some of the things that we are doing in both buildings right now to try to close some of these gaps. So, I did this from like a tier one, tier two, and tier three perspective. So tier one refers to universal instruction. This is programs and supports that are available to all students. So the biggest thing that we're doing district-wide is we are working with our staff on highly impactful tier one instructional and assessment strategies. So this is working with every single teacher in every single grade level in both buildings on what we know to be best practices in the field of education and really becoming expert in those practices. The reason why it's important to focus in that tier one is you can catch about 80% of your kids with really, really strong tier one instruction. So that's, it's really important, and quite frankly, it doesn't matter how awesome your interventions are or your specialty programming, sorry, Julia, if you don't have strong tier one instruction where kids spend the vast majority of their day, it doesn't matter. Like, it's, it's, you got to start, you got to start where you get the biggest bang for your buck. We're also working with our staff at BMS on analyzing MAP data and using it to employ targeted grouping within their classes and their win time. So Beth Tadlock had an awesome presentation a couple of weeks ago where she kind of reminded staff of what they know already with how to do this, and tomorrow we're going to be picking up again with taking a look at, a little bit deeper look into the specific skills that kids are lacking, and is it the majority of the kids that are lacking the skills in their classes or just maybe a smaller group? And then we're going to figure out how can we rework the minutes that we have with these kids in order to really pull some like strategy groups and such so that we can target those areas. We're also doing a school-wide vocabulary program called Wordy Wednesdays. This is actually part of my SLO, which I don't know if I ever have to share with you guys what that's all about, but basically, we took intentional words that are tier-two vocabulary words, so instructional words like observe, analyze, compare, contrast, and we are implementing a different vocabulary activity to do with students every week utilizing those words. The key here is by really understanding what those words mean, when they see that daily learning target in their classrooms, they're going to have a better understanding of where it is they need to go within that lesson, and there's quite a bit of data on that and having a high impact, so we are doing that. We're working with our related arts teachers to also use MAP data. We want them all to be teachers of reading and writing specifically, and really be more intentional about featuring, featuring more of that within their classes. We implemented professional learning communities this year, so this is embedded time in the workday for teachers to collaborate on common summative assessments, data trends, talking about, you know, specific areas of concern with students and then to adjust their practice. And then we've also implemented after-school support via academic lab. Good news with academic labs, we get quite a bit of traffic in here. We are still working on to gain or refine that system to make it as good as it can possibly be, but it's definitely a benefit for right now. Tier two, this would be targeting, this would not be something that's available to all students, but when we identify students that need a little bit more, these are some of the things that we're doing. So I presented last time on the student services team. That's the process that we utilize to help support students that have out-of-the-norm academic, social, emotional, and behavior needs. This allows us to be more responsive in between MAP data pulls. MAP usually dictates if a kid is going to get a reading intervention or a map intervention, but that's only happening triannually, so this can happen anytime, and it allows us to be a little more responsive. We have Stephanie Arsham coming back this week. She will be implementing a Read 180 intervention for identified fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. That will take place Monday through Thursday for approximately 60 minutes a day, so we're really looking forward to getting that going. And then tier three, of course, is our special education program for identified students. We do also have a gifted and talented program to enrich for students via differentiated educational plan and academic moderator plan. So BES is doing a lot of the same as BMS, so the highlighted portions is what makes them special. So they use STAR data, not MAP data, obviously. They also do teacher coaching cycles, which I believe Heather's probably going to speak to a little bit more. And then they are a title, identified title one school in SUNY Cali, yeah. So they also are able to do some intensive intervention and instruction for students who have a demonstrated economic need, so...
If any have any questions, that was a lot of information.
I'm just curious of the, all the red between 20 and 21, I would think that with being back in school last year, as opposed to the year before when I was a lot of at home, do we know, do we have any indication of why that, that's still the case?
So I was really surprised about that call too, but you know, when you think about it, we were actually in school through March, that's almost the majority of the school year, and, and it was normal.
Right.
Right? For 2020. And then last year, we certainly were back in person, but it was just different, and I think dealing with the in-person, hybrid, virtual, I think that's a challenge. I think student attendance was a challenge, you know, whenever there's an interruption of instruction. I think, you know, there are certainly some practices that teachers had to modify last year that were new and different, you know, to really be vigilant about the distancing and, and non-shared materials, and so, like, it caught me, but when you, when you really think about it, last year, last year was a lot more different almost than 1920.
I know it was very challenging.
Yeah. All the kids take the MAP testing and STAR testing, even being virtual, you know, like...
That could have maybe...
Yeah, not STAR. MAP, I think we did pretty well last year with getting people to do MAP, because they could do it virtually.
Yeah, just about everyone, I think a small handful did not. We couldn't get a hold of, but the rest did it from home or here at school.
So, we, I was not buying. Maybe it's a process.
Is there, is there a specific current element that you use at each free level of our literacy now?
So K5, we led the Lucy Cockens, you know, to study for both reading and reading. Six through eight is a teacher creative, so, you know, we're looking at some different things for our six-through-eight curriculum, really all those types of, other than social studies that we adopted last year. K5 for math uses MyMath, and then Tori is working with six, seventh, and eighth will be identifying theories to move into this year. Anything else, Tori?
No. Just, like I said, we have our work cut out for us, but we've got a lot of great teachers, and I'm confident that we will make gains. We just need to be really, really intentional about how we're using our time.
How have the teachers with the academic lab, they, I mean, obviously, you said there's a lot of traffic in and out. How do they feel about everything that's going on in the students that are attending? Are they, they feel like they're gaining, you know, from that and being in that?
Right now, academic lab is pretty much being utilized as like an extended... Right now, academic lab is pretty much being utilized as like an extended homework support time. What I would like to eventually see it being utilized as is that, but also a time that we can look to do some gap filling as well as we get better with using, you know, like our MAP testing data. One of the things I don't like about lab right now is it's really long for kids. I mean, they have the whole day at school. Then academic lab starts at two forty, and the light bus does not arrive until four. It's pretty long for them. So we're looking on kind of transforming the structure of it as well to build in like a break for the kids so they can, quite frankly, chill out a little bit for, almost have like another reset after school because they need to blow off steam, they just do. And, you know, academic lab is, it's a paid duty for teachers, but, you know, teachers are really, we're maxed out right now. And so it's, it's difficult to, we're always able to staff it, but I would like, love to see more regularity and who's in there so they get really comfortable in that role and kind of helping, but that's kind of how it's functioning right now. We have, I mean, we can definitely grow. Students are still able to meet with their teachers after school whenever they want. But of course, teachers are here until three thirty. That's when they're contracted to be here. So if they need more time than that, then they can come to lab. Or a lot of kids go and see their teacher first, and then they come to lab for extra help after that, so.
I would imagine even the kids that are just doing the extended homework, that's got to be beneficial to them. A lot of the kids don't get that work. I'm not going to lie to you, I don't, this math that's going on, I couldn't help my daughter do that math. So to be able, she's having an issue to be able to go to the teacher and figure it out there after school.
Some of my kids just need a quiet space. That added structure to like, okay, I'm going to, this is when I'm going to get my stuff done. So for those kids, I think it's like really, really, really beneficial for sure. They just need that added state, like, structure.
What about, oh, I was just going to say, what about, thinking of staffing, what about like a tutoring incentive maybe for some of the older kids to work with some of the younger kids?
Yeah, so we, we do have one student that's been helping here and there with math for students. I think I mentioned it a couple of meetings ago, he's in need of service hours for preparation. So this is like a win-win for him. So that's definitely, you know, a possibility down the road. We're just not quite there yet where we're ready to like be employing our students to take on that role. And kids are, you know, like, COVID's tough for everybody. It's tough for the kids too. And like, you know, they're struggling to stay afloat. And one thing Kelly didn't mention when we talked about the data is just like, we've definitely seen, and I know Julia can speak to this, like an increase in the kids who have like, need more social and emotional support as well. And I think that that has had an impact as well on some of the numbers that we're seeing.
That would be great. I know we talked about having the high schoolers come back and get involved. Ever, when, I'm not going to say if we ever, when we get past this whole COVID deal, to have some of those high school students who need service hours come back and help, you know, help with, I mean, whatever subject, but I think that'd be a great way to get some students back into school.
Is that a graduation requirement, Andrew?
It's not a reward, yeah.
I was going to say, like, when Paul said, like, can't do math, like, it's easier to send them to the academic and fight with them. You have the tears and the crying, everyone's yelling, like, they can come here and have someone help them who knows how to do that.
Yeah.
Has there been any discussion by the administration and the specialists with reviewing the data? And if there's no progress, how long we're going to continue with what we're doing now as far as programs, programming, and instruction? Karen, it is almost like you are providing Heather with the more of the intro to her parts because that, that's part of what she's going to talk about today.
I, I mean, I, perhaps our particular population right now needs a lot more structure than what Lucy Cockens is providing.
Heather, do you want to jump in there? Can you talk?
Sure. Yeah, definitely. So one of the, our work that we've adopted this year that I'm really excited about is Foundation. This is a supplemental reading program, and it really focuses on those foundational skills for kids. Print concepts, phonics, word studies, spelling, letter formation. All of those components are hit in a very structured and very rigorous way, which of course then reinforces vocabulary and comprehension. It's taught for thirty minutes each day. It is designed for K through three, so all of our K through three teachers are doing this right now. We also have a four-K supplementary kit. So that'll be starting our youngest learners out using the same language as Foundation. So when they get to kindergarten, it's already familiar to them, which is amazing. One of the things that I especially appreciate is that the activities that they do at Foundation are multi-sensory. So you are hitting all the learning pathways and really meeting all of our readers where they're at. So they're using letter tiles and cards, and they're manipulating and moving them around. They're all taught how to tap out sounds and words of a cat. They'll look at cat. And I even had a teacher tell me today that she's noticing that they're applying those skills when they're reading and tapping out words to figure them out as strategies when they're reading. They are also taught how to use phrases and sentences. They do skywriting to get that gross motor involved. There's just so many activities, there's just a great amount of activities for them to do. And then what happens is every day they practice three to five of those activities. Another thing that I really like about it is since the lessons offer so much repetition and are taught to mastery, the teachers aren't moving on until eighty percent of their class shows eighty percent efficiency in the assessed skills. So we're making sure that these kids are secure in the skills before we're pushing them ahead to the next lesson. Another thing about this program that I'm loving is that all teachers have access to what's called Wilson Academy online. And this provides videos and resources, whiteboard activities, anything they need for support. And in addition to that, we are also offering them P D throughout the year so that we'll have five one-hour sessions. Once they've gotten into the teaching, they will have an instructor to talk to and ask questions to. So it's not only self-guided P D, but also we'll have instructor, instructor level as well, and then also going supporting them as well. So far, the feedback I've gotten has been more than positive. The teachers are still excited to see. And so many of them have said, I can't believe what my kids are doing right now. I can't believe my first graders are writing complete sentences, you know, things like that. That's just really exciting to see. Did anybody have any questions about Foundation? Do you want me to explain anything more?
No, sounds like it might be filling a need that we desperately want.
Definitely, I'm, I'm really excited. I see Kelly asked me to talk about two things today, and both of them I'm really excited about. So I was like, yes, I will. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is the students that are coaching are doing. So what I'm doing is I'm working with teachers, and we're focusing on a goal for student learning. And in this way too, this provides them support within their classroom. And it's like, I'm like professional development to them, I'm a little support where I am able to really get in there with them and partner with them and not only model and co-teach, but really walk them through some best practices for working with their kids. So what we do is before the cycle begins, we need to plan and look at data. We decide a student target or a learning goal for them. And we make sure that it's standards-based, and we tie standards to those, to those goals. Then together, we create learning targets and decide how we're going to assess. And then during the cycle, I'm in, or the teacher's classroom, working with her or him and either modeling or co-teaching, but working side by side. One of the rounds I just finished up, I started off modeling. Her, her goal was small group instruction. We, you know, that was basically how we were going to have the kids meet their goal. I actually asked her, she said I could drop her name, so I'm going to. It was a goal for her because it was second grade. And she came to me at the beginning of our cycle, and she said, I've got some kids in my class that really are at beginning reading skills. And as a second-grade teacher, and as an early teacher, a newer teacher, he said, I hope you know how to meet their needs. So that's what we formed her goal around was meeting those needs of beginning readers. What does that look like? What does small group look like when, when you have these needs in your classroom? And so what I did is I started off by modeling for her, teaching the small group while she watched, asked questions. And while I was right there, you know, able to answer those questions, and she could jump in. And then we kind of co-teaching, and she was teaching part of it, and even though I was there as that support. And then finally, I backed off and let her teach that, but I was still there if she needed me for any questions. And then what then allowed me to do as well is to work with other students while she was working with this target group of students. So it was kind of getting more bang for a buck. And then at the end, we meet, you know, we do our post-assessment, and we meet, and we reflect, see how did it go, look at the data, and then decide on next, next steps. Didn't meet the learning target, how are we going to make sure that they do? So we don't want to, it's not a one-on-one, I love the path we took. We want this good work to carry over. And we meet weekly also to full plan and make changes as we need to if something's not working. So it's a very immersive process. I just finished two rounds. Melon was in fourth grade room, and her learning targets centered around retelling. And the pre-test, only ten percent of her students were able to retell a passage after reading it. And at the end of the coaching cycle, that number jumped to fifty-two percent of her kids were able to retell. In Melissa's class, per that target group of students, only fifty percent were proficient in their beginning reading skills such as diagrams, letter names, letter sounds, and that jumped to a hundred percent proficiency. So we're definitely seeing an impact, and it's really rewarding for me. And I think it's really exciting for the teachers too when they get to that, wow, this really worked. So I'm excited to continue that.
How, how long is each round?
It is centered around whatever goal or unit we're working on. Well, it's going to vary from class to class. Right now, it's been lasting anywhere from six weeks to eight weeks. So I've really been in there for quite a good chunk of time to really walk that teacher through, through a unit. There are like micro sessions that are made if the unit's only a few weeks long. But at that point, I'd probably want to do two rounds. With the third-grade teacher I mentioned, we did do a couple of weeks before the official round started, us working on some engagement lessons to make sure that her kids were where she wanted them to be once we started our full coaching cycle.
How many of these are you doing at a time, at one given time?
At one given time, I am, right now, I am trying to juggle about four at a time. Sometimes the way the units overlap, I might be dealing with six at a time. But I'm trying to keep my coaching in the morning, and then mine pull up rooms in the afternoon. But anywhere from four to six teachers at a time. I do have it kind of scheduled out for the year that every teacher will get a whole individual coaching cycle at least once. Newer teachers, twice. And everybody is going to get a team cycle as well, where we will meet as a team and have a team goal, and I'll be in the whole team's, all of them, in the team.
Heather, are you just at an elementary school?
So right now, I'm doing the coaching cycle, we cycle at the elementary school right now. I have done some D L C work at the middle school, but right now, my focus is at the elementary, yeah.
Great results.
Yeah, that's wonderful. So it's kind of an evolution, and, you know, when you think of professionals in the past and spending their whole day in a room, working with small groups of kids. Think about what Tori said in her presentation, about eighty percent of kids being affected by that tier-one instruction, or you could really make a difference with, with that tier-one instruction. And so the coaching cycles then just strengthen all of that. So in, in, it's the hope that Heather will be able to then impact more kids, more teachers, and just, you know, raise up the whole program. It's almost like that instructional coaching piece too, that would be great to have. Yeah. Well, the board should remember that we haven't, you know, we had that open map position that we were going to kind of model after the reading position. We just weren't able to fill it this year. You can see how it can be just so impactful. That's wonderful. And plus, we wouldn't really need one at the middle school because Heather's going to fix all the stuff.
Right.
Absolutely.
No pressure.
Right, no pressure.
We could use a.
Yeah. I think it like, those instructional strategies are always, yeah. Heather, can you, can you talk directly to Karen's question about curriculum? And, you know, why make the decision to go with Foundations and stick with Cockens as opposed to just moving on to something else?
Absolutely. So Foundations is meant, it was built to be a supplementary program to, to your standing reading, reading curriculum. It is kind of those drills and skills, those foundational skills that students need to be successful at reading. But units of study really hit the comprehension side of it, the how you apply those skills when you're reading. So one of the foundations is, hey, here, I'm going to teach you the skills. And the units of study is, okay, now I'm going to teach you how to apply those skills to your reading and writing. So that's kind of where we're at.
Well, I can see how the Foundations would apply to kids who need a more concrete base, while Lucy Cockens method applies to more kids who come in with more language experience from home and are able to then take off when they get to school. And I, I'm hoping that the two in tandem would, would really improve our test scores. Having worked with a, this is back when the dinosaurs taught, a scripted reading program called Distar. We actually read a script to students and had them act and react and make hand movements with what we were doing, and darn if those kids didn't learn how to read really fast. So I'm just thinking that our, perhaps our population just needs a little bit more of the concrete or doesn't need, doesn't need more extract.
And I think this is definitely an option that's going to be great for them. One of the things that, another thing that I love about Foundations is it is based in Orton-Gillen methods. And that's what I was trained in, and I, I've been saying it. This is not just instruction for those kids that are struggling, this is just good instruction. So it really, you know, Orton-Gillen was created for kids with dyslexia. And so it really is going to hit all those learners and really help move them forward. I'm, I'm excited. I hope, as you do, that it really does impact our students positively.
Brief learn.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Thanks.
Any other questions for Heather? Otherwise, we'll hang up on you a second time. Thanks so much.
All the time. Thanks, bye.
Bye. Anything else for the children? No, you're good, okay. All right, then, moving on to the people's service reports. All right, I'm going to airplay here. Co-engineering. All right, so hi, everybody. For those that don't know me, I'm the Director of People's Services. My name is Julia Gersonski. I am fifty percent here and then fifty percent in another district close by, Silver Lake. So I just wanted to give you a quick update of some of the things we've been working on this year. And then I want to start with our mental health grant. So when I first started. So when I first started three years ago, I came into a mental health grant from DPI. It was written, um, by somebody else and we implemented it the best we could. And then COVID happened and everything that we intended to do, all the good stuff, um, kind of got half done with the intention of, you know, wanting to do it, but with COVID, we couldn't. And then we had to pivot a little bit. So I wrote a grant last year, um, to continue the work that we were on the path to doing and then intensified a little bit more. So we found out August 18th that we were awarded that grant for another two-year cycle. So for the next two years, we're going to receive an additional $24,000 to achieve the goals outlined in the grant. So I'm going to kind of give you an overview of what those goals are. So we had to write three practice priority statements. And those statements had to have some actionable items that we were going to do over the next two years. So number one was, we believe that we can reduce the percentage of parents and staff who report they need more support in helping their children with mental health needs, um, or related issues, as well as addressing the impact around COVID-related trauma. So some of that impact is social emotional, some of that impact, as you're hearing tonight, is academic. Um, and how are we going to do that? So we're going to provide more professional development and learning opportunities around emotional regulation, building up resiliency, understanding and dealing with anxiety and depression, coping with trauma, understanding that a little bit deeper. Um, how to cope with stress in a healthy way. We're seeing, um, a huge increase up here at the middle school level with, um, thoughts of suicide and self-harm and bullying and all these tendencies that, um, we didn't see as significantly in years past. Some deeper work about being trauma-sensitive, which is what our, um, initial mental health grant two years ago was written mostly about. And then just ongoing coaching with our school-based help provider. So we are still partnering with PSG who we had, um, two years ago as well. So that's practice priority number one. Number two is we believe we can reduce the number of students who are needing more targeted mental health support. So like Tori was talking about with the academic side with tier two and three, those more intensive services. Um, beefing that up, beefing those supports up at tier one a little bit so that we can reduce the amount of need for that intensive service. So right now, we are not able to support all the students we need to based on our screeners because the need is so high. So what can we do universally to reach all of our students and maybe decrease that more intensive targeted support a little bit? So these were our action steps to try and do that. Extending our social emotional curriculum to include more significant mental health-related topics. Um, contracting again with PSG to train staff using emotional regulation tools, mindfulness techniques, understanding, understanding distress tolerance and what that means and how to identify it and use the tools to help. Um, and then purchasing and training staff on more evidence-based social emotional curriculum. So when I walked into the grant a few years ago, it was our first go-around at social emotional curriculum. That was brand new for us. So we tried to implement the best we could, COVID happened. And then priorities shifted a little bit in terms of how we, um, you know, what, what we introduced to students and, and how we supported them. So, um, I would say that we still have work to do on, um, meeting those social emotional curriculum needs to fidelity. And we are, um, having conversations about it and, and making sure that it continues to happen. So beefing that up a little bit. And then practice priority statement number three is we believe we can reduce the percentage of students who report feeling anxious, sad, depressed, bullied, or have thoughts related to self-harm and suicide. So we have seen that percentage, not just here, um, in the majority of Walworth County districts. Um, these significant mental health issues and numbers have really increased. And so we, we want to, to reduce that percentage of, of students who report feeling these things. We just, um, completed the YRBS this fall, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which, um, was new to us. Uh, they did not do it the last two years because of COVID, they do it by annually. Um, so that was a anonymous survey that, that kiddos in grade six stage could take around these big mental health, um, issues. So we don't get those results just yet, but we did some informal surveys from our school counselor here. And that's how we got the percentages, but they were up in the sixties, um, the high sixties for students who felt these, these big feelings. So how are we going to address that over the next two years? Provide students with mental health literacy skills, wellness skills, understanding what these mean, how to deal, deal with them and, and have strategies to cope with them. And embed more self-regulation strategies and practices into our general school environment. Empowering students to increase their tolerance and understanding of differences and to reduce the stigma around mental health. A lot of, uh, the survey, um, talked about how there was a real internalizing sense of not wanting to share the feelings around being anxious or depressed or having thoughts of suicide and self-harm. Um, and having a place or, or a person to turn to, to help cope with that. So creating an avenue or a pathway, so students, parents, community, staffers, know that when somebody comes to you with this sort of a, um, plea or help, that you have an avenue to go to get that student's support. So, uh, lots of tasks ahead of us, but, um, I'm excited about, uh, how it's outlined and, and who we're partnering with and, um, staff feedback around what we're doing, um, all very positive things moving forward. So that's the mental health grant. Any questions on that before, um, oh, looking ahead to December? So, um, our December PD Day is going to be focused on mental health. So we've been doing a lot of, Tori and Liz, we've been doing a lot of work around, um, the PLC model and really diving into that. Tier, yes, tier one instruction. Um, and that's really been the focus since August when we kind of kicked back coming back to school. So we're shifting in December to focus on mental health. PSG, our, our school-based mental health partner is coming to provide, um, that trauma-sensitive school training. So we have some new staff that really, uh, didn't receive that intensive, um, professional development opportunity last year. So they're going to kind of do a review of one and two and then convert into how COVID has kind of created these new traumas in kids and people, anybody, and what that means and what that looks like from their, um, mental health perspective. So looking forward to that one. And then I found a, um, educator who works in Milwaukee Public Schools and has shifted, uh, to doing trainings on educator wellness. And so we're going to focus the second half of our day in December to work on understanding as human beings and educators, how what we're going through with COVID and shifting our practice has affected what we do and how to understand that, name that, and provide us tools to move forward so that we can continue to help kids as we can. So it's kind of that self-care, uh, perspective, but just building the capacity within ourselves to understand that, yes, we're going through this and there's a name for it and there's something that we can do to help each other move forward. So really looking forward to that. I linked the, um, PDF here, um, that Julia Richter gave me for staff. So I'll send this out to you guys so you can review it and, um, take a peek at that. Really excited for that work. So that's it for the mental health grant. Any questions on that before I move to special education?
If the teachers need to talk, like, will they, would, uh, PSG talk to them too?
Yeah, so in the mental health grant, I built in, um, support from PSG with consultations and just support and whatever that looks like to us, we can, we didn't have to really define it. At the tier one level, all teachers. And then tier two and tier, tier three level has its own separate set of, um, money set aside for that. So that's more like the intensive behaviors that teachers are dealing with, the strategies that aren't really working at the tier one level. So there's two different, um, funds just for that alone, for that, and for both of the years, so. Any other questions around that? Okay.
Is there a way for any of the at-home students to access?
Access PSG?
Or, yeah.
Oh, access social emotional curriculum?
Sure.
Yep, so, um, through empower, that, that's not done. You mean like the actual kiddos that are virtual, right?
Virtual or kids, I know, like, kids that may have to be home because of.
Quarantine?
Yeah.
Yeah, so all of the lessons can be delivered, um, if they're on like a Google Meet or something. Uh, but otherwise it's just supplementary things to whatever the lesson is in the curriculum. So, um, second step is our curriculum and they have, um, like kind of takeaways or supplementary supports that can be given to the kiddos. Um, but there, so there's only like tw- depending on the grade level that you're teaching, there's only like 20 to 30 some lessons per year. So you don't have to teach it every day. You'll get through the curriculum in the whole year by doing it once or twice a week. So they wouldn't miss, miss many lessons if they were just on like quarantine period for a couple, a week or two. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. All right, so I'm going to shift to special education. So the other part of my role is overseeing special education. And we were lucky enough to go through the procedural compliance self-assessment, which, um, some of you may remember, we were supposed to do two years ago. And then because of COVID, they said, we're not doing that, so kind of, but we're not doing that. And then last year, they said again, we're not going to do the audit or self-assessment. Schools, teachers are going through a lot, so wonderful. So we had to do it this year. So there are four, there are four parts to an audit or procedural, um, compliance self-assessment. Prepare, assess, correct, and close. So to prepare, our specialized staff and look at Tori, we're trained, uh, by taking the certification E-course. And so what the E-course is, is, uh, a way for everybody to understand what you're going to be doing by reviewing these IEPs and evaluations and what our obligations are to make sure that these documents that we're writing are compliant by the law. Okay? So that was number one, everybody had to take the E-course. And we provided some additional time for staff to do that, um, during their summers or if they wanted to do it, um, during some of their, uh, in-service training, they could do that too, it was about an hour and a half. And then we had set a time to review and assess all of our records. So DPI, um, will randomly generate a sample for us to review. So they took all of the evaluations and IEPs that we wrote last year from January till spring, till the end of the year. And that generated 14 IEPs and evaluations and then five implementation reviews to complete. So on the PD day in, um, October, we just hammered through all of those IEPs and evaluations. We split the specialized staff, uh, and our school psych and a, um, representative from Lakeland, Susan Murray, she came as well. Um, we split them into teams and then they each reviewed a handful of IEPs. And then they had to go through each of the IEPs looking for a compliance standard. So there were four compliance standards for the evaluations that we had to hit saying, yes, we did these things that the law says and we are compliant. And the IEPs had 18 compliance standards to go through. So, um, you know, eyes were crossing at the end of the day, but we got the work done. Um, and then we had to document any errors that we found in those samplings. So I linked in here some actions that we have to, um, kind of ensure we do for future compliance. So some of those actions are, uh, reconvening an IEP meeting to address the errors and, and, um, talk about corrections and how we're going to move forward. Some of them are, um, staff meetings, processes, procedural changes. So I had to identify the actions that we're going to take. And then right now, we're in the corrective state. So we had to complete those by just the 15th, because when they were due, so I submitted them, um, last week. Um, so now we have to identify and correct all those errors until January. And then, um, in that time, in that next two month-ish time, I'm going to be talking to district staff about all of our findings, all of our errors, how we need to improve some of our policies and procedures and practice. And then I'm going to convene the ad hoc committee, which is the board parent member to talk about, um, you know, what our process is, what our policies are, what is in a compliant IEP. Um, and kind of make a, a little bit more of an awareness at the, the broader level. Kim has, I kind of stopped her at one of our board meetings this summer, or fall, it was probably early this fall, and asked, um, if she would be a part of that. So she graciously agreed and was excited, you're excited, yeah, yeah. So that, that is to come. And then we need to closely eye, need to closely monitor IEPs and evaluations from January until April. And so what's going to happen is DPI is going to randomly pull the samples from January to April and make sure that all of the identified errors that we found aren't done again. So if they find more errors in those compliance, um, standards, then we have to go through this whole process again until when they pull their sample, they don't find any errors. So it's a lot of back and forth with DPI until the end of this year, um, until, actually until the fall. But our job is to know the errors, not make them, and have compliant IEPs and evaluations. So that's our goal. So a lot of fun work, right?
Yep.
Um, any questions about the self-assessment? You'll hear more about it, um, as we kind of identify or make known what our errors are and where our work needs to be. But that work will be done within the specialized department first, um, before kind of with the rest of the community. Any questions? It's a lot.
Sounds good.
Okay. Wonderful. And then just an update on our school psych position. So we entered a collaborative agreement last year, um, or this year with, uh, Williams Bay School District. So we have a 60/40 split. You'll remember last year, we had a 50/50 split with, um, Meatland School District. And then, um, their director left and they hired that psych on full-time, which was wonderful for her. Um, so Ellen Carpenter is our school psych and she is here Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And in the Williams Bay School District, Tuesday, Thursday. I kind of outlined some of her primary responsibilities, um, specialized 504 GT evaluations, um, providing mental health services to students with, uh, IEPs, some of the most, more significant of the mental health, um, issues identified in their plans. Overseeing all the 504 plans, coordinating with teachers and parents, um, reviewing those plans annually. She's administering our REA screener and, uh, is doing our access testing for students with EL needs in, when that window opens. Providing PD and consultation with our district staff around student needs. And then just collaborating with a reading specialist, um, on tier two and tier three interventions at the primary level. So, um, what we're noticing, which is kind of what you've heard over and over tonight, is that our student needs are, are increasing, academic and mental health-wise. Um, these gaps and lack of, um, consistency with, um, the curriculum being taught to fidelity and just the way that they, these kiddos had to adapt and change over the last year and a half has really impacted them and we're, we're seeing that. And our projection is that we're going to be continuing to see that for probably a couple of years. Um, we currently have 78 students with IEPs. That is, that is a high number for a district of our size. Um, we have eight initial evaluations right now, 11 reevaluations. Typically at this time in a school year, we may have two to three. Um, so a lot of that work that are, that we would like Ellen to be doing, she just cannot do because of the, the needs that we have. Um, and we recognize that and we have to shift what our, what our, um, you know, what she can do so that we can prioritize where her specialties lie. Um, she definitely plays a little bit more of a reactive role in supporting student need because of the demand. But, um, just know that, that it, we are aware of it and we are continuing to analyze where our people services supports are in the district. And, um, you know, it's just, it might be something that's going to be here for a little while. So just wanted to be really upfront and transparent about that. Any questions? Lot of information.
CHT evaluations.
So, um, gets intimated. So if students, uh, meet the criteria that we have, she would do the actual testing part of it?
That's a lot, a lot of students with IEPs.
It is, it is. And we've had some that, you know, have just moved into our district, are open enrolled. And so we're never, I mean, you know, in a district of declining enrollment, even if you get students who have IEPs, like, it's still more students in our district than in our seats. And, um, we have a wonderful special education department that can, that can handle the need because we've increased even that. Um, but, yeah, it is, it is a high number. And, and just like. And just like Tori was talking about in the beginning of this kind of conversation, the more we increase what we can do at tier one and tier two, the more that number decreases. Because then really the kiddos that you are evaluating do have the highest need and likely will meet eligibility for a disability. But over, you know, kind of pushing through those evaluations or those initial evaluations to say they're not where they're supposed to be, the majority of our kids that we see right now are not where they're supposed to be. It doesn't necessarily mean that they have a disability and need to be evaluated, but it's, it's the point of where everybody's at right now. There's, we don't know what else to do, so we're going to push the evaluation. I'm not, I'm not certain that the majority of those evaluations are going to qualify because we have a very strict criteria to say you meet eligibility or you don't. And there's a lot of special factors that come into play with that. And one of the factors is you didn't receive instruction to fidelity for a year and a half. So if you're behind because you weren't accessing core instruction because you were virtual or just not attending, that's going to impact whether or not you get eligibility, meet eligibility criteria. So it's going to be tricky because, you know, everybody's kind of, parents, teachers, it's like, students are showing up differently for everybody. And how do we adapt and change in that, I was wondering.
How often are they reevaluated?
Once we have an IEP, you're reevaluated every three years.
Every three?
Mm-hmm. And so they have a choice. So if you have kiddos who are pretty involved, where the needs look pretty similar from 2018 to now, parents have a choice to say, no, I'm, I know programming is where it should be for my kiddo with an IEP. I'm good for waiting the reevaluation. And they don't have to go through the whole battery of assessments they want. However, if you have a learner who receives reading and math instruction and a lot can change from third grade to sixth grade, it's really smart to reevaluate that need and to see if what we're doing or what we have been doing over the last three years has made any change or impact based on more formal assessments instead of just, you know, the maps or progress monitoring data, that sort of thing. So I encourage reevaluations to always happen every three years. I don't tend to support waiting them. But I will always have that conversation with case managers and parents if the needs really are pretty significant, where the data really wouldn't change or the programming really wouldn't change. Is that something through DPI?
Reevaluation?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That they said that you can wait.
Just not, not a great practice because kiddos really can change over a three-year timeframe.
And your, your opinion, the need that we see for the increase in those, the increase of students that need psych, psych services go hand in hand with the need that we see with the reading that we just visualized?
Yeah. So we have been. Okay. So we, out at the school, our pupil service full-time school counselor has been kind of like in crisis mode with everything that she's been doing to support students' mental health and wellness. And we made the decision not to evaluate the universal, doing the universal screener at the six, eight level because she wouldn't be able to provide the intervention because of all the other higher level needs. So they need tier one, tier two, tier three, most intensive interventions because the need is so high. Tier two interventions is kind of, is supposed to be that support so that when they get back to the classroom, they can perform or have the same skills as their peers do. So we wouldn't be able to even provide the amount of intensive interventions at the six, eight level because the needs are so high. So our, our school council at the elementary school was going to deliver the interventions there and up at the four, five level. So yes, it's just figuring out where the highest need is and putting our most experienced and trained people there.
I don't know if those kind of numbers, I don't know if a 60-40 split is enough.
I, the amount of, I agree.
The amount of need is, it's.
Yeah. If we have one that we like and it's worth, we may have to do a re-evaluate.
Yeah. And the school site to student ratio is one to 500 in our state. That's, that's what the recommended ratio is. Now, if you were to go to the majority of districts in the state of Wisconsin, school sites are lucky to have a one to 500 ratio. It's typically more to like one to 750 or one to 1,000. But then school districts are advocating for more once they get beyond that number. So in terms of just looking at that number without taking any of our data into consideration, we would meet that criteria easily. So I will share this with everybody on the board. I'll, Kelly can send it up, but I do want to give you all an update. Anything else for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, on airplane. On airplane, the thing to remember.
To business manager reports.
Okay. Well, I have no hard numbers to argue with tonight. I just want, I know I'm very disappointed. I just wanted to update you guys. Last Friday, I got to go to the Baird Model Training. Every year, they revamp the model and then we go to the training and see what's new and different. And it was in person. So that was really cool. Yeah. And I think that, well, it's, it's a very useful tool for budgeting and forecasting. But the thing that I like the best is spending time with other area business managers because they are really smart. And I can just absorb and hear all their ideas and, you know, really make some, I get much more than just the model training when I go. And it's a group, it's a small group. So it's a really nice setting for that. So this year, in addition to the regular training, I met a business manager named Kathy who shared a tool that she uses to help gather and compile data and prioritize from the board and the administrative team. And the purpose of the tool is to give a deeper context to the budget or forecasting scenarios, which aid the board in making well-informed decisions. So Kelly and I, well, we separately took a look at it and we're both kind of excited about it. So we're going to continue to review that, maybe make some tweaks here and there so that it would be appropriate for our district. But then we're hoping, if everything goes away, that it looks like it could, that then we can use that like in some of our board work sessions, some of our administrative team meetings. So it's really exciting. It's very streamlined to bring all of things together and to help the board. You know, you're all individuals, but then to get all that data combined, piled so that you can act as the board that you are. It's pretty exciting because it's, it's challenging work to get the L together. So it looks fun. That's all.
Thank you.
I know, I know.
I think that you like it. It's okay.
It really is a, it allows the board to make decisions with the budget with some context and kind of set up some of those initial, or weigh in on some of those initial assumptions that we can put into play before we put numbers in the models. So. And it allows you to say, well, these are the things we said we want. Does this budget support that? You know, so it'll be fun. I promise.
Can't wait.
I'm just kidding. Moving on to superintendent reports.
Just a couple of, just a couple of comments. Just wanted to update you on our COVID numbers on the dashboard. We have two active cases in each building. So, I mean, it's been an active couple of weeks and I'm sure that with the community and my community message, they just had a lot more positive COVID activity. But I think the other piece that the board should be aware of, in looking at some of the attendance data, today especially, we've got a lot of kids that are not in school. They're quarantining, not just because of us, but there's parents that are positive or family members that are positive or, you know, siblings. And so, you know, justify, it's not that kids are not coming to school, but I think sometimes when we hear families talking about a spike up or a spike in our community, you know, I just assume it's, they're talking about the school, but it's potentially it's also their neighbors, their friends and just having more occurrences of the virus. So just have some words on that. We had our Veterans Day Assembly or Veterans Day Program last week. It was lovely. We went ahead and had the performing groups in person. We had a handful of veterans. I think the handful of veterans get smaller every year, unfortunately, and some parents and family members that came as well. So that was, it was just kind of nice to be almost back to normal-ish with our Veterans Day Program. And then the students watched the program from their classrooms via the live stream. For me, also been working on the policy work, getting that ready for last week, the two plants that you saw during the public hearing. And then out in the community, we got the next, the second edition of the newspaper. You know, some news went out. Helped out with Fall Fest and as part of my work at the library board, we hired a new library director who started today. So a little bit of everything.
Any comments from board members?
The only thing I have, I really appreciate the reports. I appreciate the time. Nice to hear these things and, you know, in person as well as, but it is good to dive into some of that stuff.
I agree. Very thorough. So Veterans Day Assembly was wonderful. It's nice to be back a little bit.
Also Katie and I and Kelly attended the Wilds with Dinner in late September. Wonderful learning experience and a chance to, to get out of our just Brookwood. Yeah. Well, not only Comfortville, but Brookwood box that we're in and see other districts and hear other administrators and school board members. And it's really beneficial to participate in some of the Wilds with them.
And the Fall Fest I thought was wonderful. It was a great hit. Okay. Well, then moving on to our regular board meeting will be December 20th, 2021 in this room. And then we have the community listening session on December 2nd and the work session on December 15th. Can we get a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.